Everyone stand for the pledge to the plate. Okay, welcome everyone to the first meeting of the fiscal year. I hope everyone had a wonderful 4th of July and I have to tell you, I was very pleased myself anyhow with the 4th of July fireworks last evening. And I felt they went very well. And appreciate the help of everyone that was involved in getting the fireworks up and running yesterday. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Any discussion on that at all? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Unanimous on all three of us. I forgot to mention that we have two council votes missing today and they both had other commitments that they could not get out of today. Alright, next up we have, well Lou, I'm gonna go ahead and put you on next. On the town administrator's report if I could.
The only thing I have, your honor, is ordinance 4-2003. This was introduced at the last meeting and it meant the Elton zoning ordinance specifically article ten for municipal use stable that allows group homes and incentive business district T1 zoning. I would recommend for adopt ordinance 4-2023.
We introduced this on June 12th. We had a public hearing on June 12th. We also had a public hearing and introduction on June 21st and today would be the adoption period. I don't see any reason why we couldn't move forward with this. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 4-2023? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. I can second if you want me to. Any discussion on it? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else Lou?
That's it.
Okay, let's have a discussion. Singerly Fire Company, you wanna come up and talk to us for a minute? Mr. Rob Huller and Sam Goldwater, I mean, you guys are regulars here at Town Hall now, which I like. Yes, that's correct. Well, listen, we had a meeting last week. I met with you two gentlemen and it's been an ongoing discussion. I apologize that we don't have a full board today. But we've had some discussion about where are we gonna go with this? Do you want me to get into what we talked about or do you? So, we had a little discussion and one of the biggest, can I say anything about what we talked about? Okay. One of the future problems that we may have, that starting in the year 2027, Singerly Fire Company's gonna start having, if everything stays the same, we recognize that they're gonna have to dip into all their assets and then within 2032, which is five years away, Singerly Fire Company would not be able to perform at the level they're performing at today. At any level. So, it would be a bankrupt situation by 2032. And the challenge that we have here in the town of Elton, of course, we wanna make sure that we provide safety services for our residents of our town. And for anyone that doesn't know, there's been a longstanding partnership with Singerly Fire Company for many, 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 many years. And I like how we've actually kinda brought this back together again. So, we went through a lot of different scenarios and probably the scenario that is gonna have to make more sense is that at some point, the town board is gonna have to make a decision to help fund one-third of the Singerly Fire Company's budget. One-third is probably coming from the county, one-third from fundraising, and one-third from the town of Elton. So, we know that if everything grows the way that I believe that our growth is happening, we're still well short of meeting that number. We need to be able to give the fire company about $1.2 million per year. Currently, the town of Elton provides about $150,000 to the fire company. The last two years, we were very fortunate that we were able to add another million dollars to the mix, but the fact is, that needs to be happened every year. I mean, we have to be able to figure out how we can get to about $1.2 million. Steve, if I calculated this correctly, I think about every penny of taxes equals, was it $160,000? Does that sound about right? Yeah, I think we were about $160,000 for every assessable dollar here in the town of Elton equals one penny. So, for us to be able to achieve our goal with Singerly Fire Company, we would have to be looking at close to a seven cent increase in taxes to make this happen. It doesn't have to be all in year one. So, I want, the purpose of this is, I want the board and our staff to really think about this, is that kinda one of the proposals that I had in mind was that if we could do a 2% increase year one, add another 2% increase in year two, two cent. Two cent increase, two cent increase, then we're looking at year three to make that adjustment, depending on how much growth that we had in the town. But we could be throwing in another three cents at the end of the day, so for a total of seven cents to make that.
So, what year are you talking about?
It wouldn't be this fiscal year, but it could be starting next fiscal year. Be starting next fiscal year. And I think that we have to do a little bit more digging, a little bit more research, but if the town board is okay with that thinking, then that would be something that we start to look for to budget for next year. If it's not something that the board, and you know, we're just the three of us, but if all the two nod, then we're okay here. But if we're not okay, then we have to go with the process of, you know, soliciting and putting it out on a referendum and seeing that the taxpayers of the town would support it. And I believe this is something that we have no, we have no, we can't look at this thing globally. And I've said that before, that our ambulance service, our fire service, you look at what happened down the street here a month ago or two months ago. If we didn't have the equipment and the talent that we have today, I think back about the photos and the stories I heard about the 50s and early 60s, how Main Street caught on fire and it kept going and it kept going and it kept going. Today, we were very fortunate that that didn't happen. It was contained to two buildings and it didn't go any further than exactly where it started. So, I guess, am I missing anything?
No, I mean, those are the big points. We have been going through a comprehensive planning process, which is what the town's been working on. And so, in our discussions now, we have, you know, those dates. 2027 is when we'll start to draw out the savings that we've had set aside for capital and pull down. Within five years, I'll get exhausted. So, there are a number of things that we're looking at internally as a company, you know, for some basic money management and some small cost savings, but we've gotta get the revenue up to $1.2 million.
And I think the main thing that for everyone that's listening out there or in the room here, we can't, this is something we can't allow to fail. Whether it's Singerly or someone, if it's a town of Elton Fire Company, it's gonna have to happen. And we'll never be without Singerly. We're gonna just figure out how we can make this happen. So, anyone that's listening, we're gonna make it happen. We don't know how we're gonna make it happen, but we're gonna make this thing happen. We have to make it happen. You gotta make it happen.
If it wasn't designed the way we're currently designed, with the relationship with the town, the cost for a fire EMS would be about equivalent to EBD.
So, when you think about the biggest challenge we have is the ambulance services today. And you mentioned, was it confirmed about Perryville or is that?
So, for example, we'll use the example of the community. So, the community fire company in Perryville, they've been struggling with their EMS service and funding. And this past weekend, they asked the county to staff an ambulance because they didn't have anything to staff their ambulance. So, the county government made people extra overtime to hover over the holiday weekend providing that service. And we know right across the line in Newark, Atman, they're having financial problems as well. So, it's a very close knit association. But we have a very special relationship here with you and the town of Elton that we've always had. So, that I'd be definitely in a better position because we're having proactive conversations about where you are.
Unfortunately, Newark and Perryville didn't have these conversations upfront. They literally waited till the end and it was over. It was not, it became nonfixable.
Well, listen, anyone that lives in the town of Elton knows how important Singerly Fire Company is and they understand that we gotta figure out how we can make this work. And I think every meeting, Michelle, if you can put this on the agenda, I think it needs to be forefront for us and I, as I stated to both of you in the meeting, I wanna go a step further and I'd like for you to request a meeting with Wayne Toon and also request a meeting with County Executive Hornberger. Either we can go there or she could come in, but I think it's very important for us to start looking at services, I keep using the word globally, but if Perryville's having hiccups, I'm sure some of the other fire companies are having hiccups also, and I think it needs to be looked at countywide. And how do we do that? You know, it comes down to how do we do that without losing our identities, right? And I think that that's always been the challenge. Everyone wants their space, but I think we can do it. And I have a commitment to Singerly Fire Company that I'll do everything in my means to get that up there. Do you guys have any comment or questions or?
No, I like your response. Have you had, and you probably have not, but you named Toon and the county executive. I think it's better to meet with them sooner than later. This point of what you see. So, they have a picture of what's going on and what has to happen moving forward.
So, if you could get that meeting scheduled for me, that'd be great. Any Wednesday, Sunday. And I'll go see that.
Is that a meeting you would like us to attend?
Let me see how it'll go. Have you had any, you've had some discussions also. I know you guys have had discussions. You've been over there too. I think it just needs to come, we just need to get this thing rolling. But I'm committed, listen, I don't mind saying it. If we have to raise taxes to provide fire service and ambulance service to the residents of the town of Elton, guess what we're, what my feelings are? We're gonna raise them.
Well, it's pretty much a necessity. What are we gonna do about it?
It's very justifiable.
What just happened downtown was a major endorsement. Unfortunate, but you know, this really hits home. And I'm surprised if your annual fund draw doesn't do better than it does. I didn't realize the low percentage that you guys get back on your returns.
Roughly 12% of businesses in our 81 square miles
That's horrible.
That's amazing. If any amount would be
And I think this is the plate. Current, listen, I think the town fathers have always known how important Singerly Fire Company is because it's written into the charter. If it wasn't written into the charter, then we would say, well, listen, it's not our problem. Well, it is our problem, right?
A large number of those pictures are members of the fire company.
What about that guy over there? He was never a member. That's when he had hair. Very good. Any last comments? I promise you, this is on the top of the plate.
Appreciate the full town administration, commissioners, and yourself and everything you've been doing for us. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, you said we have a special relationship. We want that to continue. It will.
Absolutely. We're part of the town, as the finance department, as the public works, as the health and police work. Where it works. The fact of the town department.
No question.
I'd like to personally thank you for saving my little building, which was in the shadow of the fire. I don't know how I came out unscathed, but thank you, thank you.
We tried to keep that air conditioner from hitting the roof, but we didn't go enough properly.
You know what, Sam? It must've hit the roof completely flat because when I went through the next day, there wasn't a mark on the roof.
Wonderful. Any last comments?
No, we appreciate the effort.
You're on the top of the list.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Alrighty. Alright, I got a handful of items here. I guess the first two things that I wanted to mention, I actually had a discussion with former Officer Joffeys this morning and had a discussion with Chip, our building inspector. And I keep going back, I look back at some of the things that we could've done better over the last eight or nine years. And one of the things that really has always bothered me is that we haven't, I think as much, we put a lot of effort into trying to make Hollinsworth Manor a better place. And we do. The amount of patrol and police protection, the amount of cleanup that we do at Hollinsworth Manor, we probably spend, over the last nine years, we probably spend, I would say, out of our $12 million budget, maybe $2.5 million, $3 million worth of resources in one neighborhood. And we've been doing it over and over and over and over again, attempting to try to make it better. And one of the things that I said to Gene Mitter years ago was that maybe we need to be a little more active down there and try to make it a better neighborhood. Or if we can't make it a better neighborhood, maybe we need to start buying some of those properties that are falling down and decaying and turning into blight. For the neighbors that live down there that really care, no one wants to look across the street and see a house that's boarded up. And we all recognize what's gonna happen next. There'll be a match that's gonna light that house on fire and then now we have to use these other resources again, right? If we would've started looking at this blight nine years ago and if we could've budgeted to take care of eight or nine of those blighted houses, whether it's to demolish, to purchase and demolish, guess what? We would've probably had most of that blight out of the neighborhood at that point. So, I'd like to, I know we missed the tax sale, which just happened, but I know that there's a handful of houses down there right now that are boarded up. I'd like to ask staff to identify 10 of those houses. And if they're 10 houses that the town of Elton can acquire, let's figure out how we can get our hands on them. Let's start today. I've got three years left, two and a half years left, and it's a countdown. And I'd like to, let's try to get some of those houses. Maybe we can do what we're doing like on High Street. We bought a lot. The goal is to get Habitat for Humanity involved and build a really nice place. Build a better place for our residents. And maybe we can do that. Maybe we can take 10 of those houses that are physically unable to repair and maybe we can make them better. Maybe we can acquire them, maybe we can do something for them. If not, at least we can create more of a grassy area for the neighborhood. But let's identify them first. If we can identify them and then we'll see what kinda dollars that means. You guys okay with that?
Do you have a number on the, how many houses there would need to be?
I think that, listen, I believe if you went around there and you looked how many pieces of plywood's on different pieces of houses, there could be 40 or 50 houses down there. Forty to fifty?
It's bad out there and growing up here as a child, it wasn't always like that.
No, it was not.
And I remember when I came from Perryville, Elton High School's assistant principal, the staff used to say, "Well, if you've been out to Hollinsworth Manor, there's problems children out there." But I've never had a problem with any children in school out there because pretty much I'm from the area to the area and those kids look good. What you see is what has happened to other people and something needs to be done. It's bad, it just doesn't give you a good look. But if we're going to have the staff to go out there to look at the houses and name them, and I hope you identify somebody who has that responsibility, because even in the town of Elton, we had some of that same problem and someone from the staff is supposed to go around and identify them. I think they did, but we never followed up. So, in this instance, I agree with you. Identify somebody to take charge and let's move on and try to do something better.
Lou, if you could identify someone to take charge for us?
We have a building department that'll identify the properties. The problem might be that it could be duplexes where one side is active, people live there, the others boarded up, and you'd have to deal with that issue.
And I think that's a good step. I think it's a good step.
I think it's a good step too, Louis, and I'm quite sure your staff will recognize if a duplex is there and somebody's living beside it, you can't do anything, but as we're saying, identifies that would be accountable to us.
Well, we already, I'm already gonna do that.
I'm saying it again, identify those. I understand you saying that.
Detailed list of the properties
That sounds good.
Within two weeks probably.
Thank you, Lou. Do you have any comments, Rob?
No.
Thank you. I met with Commissioner Brumall this morning and she raised a concern and I'll bring it back up again. At our last meeting, we talked about from a weed eating standpoint on Moore Street, you get to this bridge and it looks great, but as soon as you go across this bridge, there's weeds growing up out of the sidewalks. There's weeds growing up on the sidewalks, out from the sidewalk to the weed and it looks terrible. I mean, there are probably, there's some weeds that must be two foot tall if you go in front of Rambo's house. I'm trying to think of that, is that Hollinsworth Avenue? When you come out? So, you come down in here? Is that where? Kentmere, yeah, Kentmere. And it looks terrible. Now, I know we talked about waiting to do a spray. I don't know if that ever happened, but I just think that needs to be weed eat it. I don't think it's that difficult to weed eat, weed eat that side. And to add to that, you know, when you're in Elton, I know it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit, when we have a state highway, which is Main Street. We have a state road, which is Bridge Street. It's very difficult for us to wait, I think, wait for the state highway to take care of some of these areas. Because our residents, they don't know that that bridge, the Waterbaker Bridge, they don't know that that's not the town of Elton route. They don't know Delaware Avenue Bridge does not belong to the town of Elton. It belongs to the state of Delaware, or state of Delaware. I sound like Joe Biden. I mind too. But I would say that it belongs to the state of Maryland, but we are the ones. Our town is the one that's being judged on this. And to give you a great example, you look at any of our bridges, the North Street Bridge, the Bridge Street Bridge, there is weeds growing up on the bridge. Now, I don't know how we can get those things off of there and take it down, but I still believe that one person in an hour could take the weed eater with a truck, protecting them, and just run right along there, walk along there and take those weeds out. And then, in front of the bridge, there's guardrails. And where the guardrails are, it's just overate up with weeds also. But that's, that's people coming into our town and that's the first thing that they see. They see these things. And if you go over by Howard's Vine, it's the same thing. By the bridges, it's just, just needs to be done better.
Are you suggesting the public works take care of it?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm suggesting to Lou to figure out how we can get that done. Now, if we're in violation of some law that says that we can't cut on state highway property or the county road property, then I can live with that. But if it's not some type of law or, let's figure out how we can get that cut.
Not a law, probably a liability issue. Performing work on the state highway right away. Right, really, because we're not insured for that. So, but I'll send a letter to the, I mean, I'll send an email to the district engineer and structures and ask them about it.
And maybe we can invite them in. Michelle, can you invite, see who that is and invite him in and?
Kenny Hunter is the district engineer.
Yeah, well, let's talk to him and see if we can come up with some type of compromise. Maybe there's a waiver they can sign for us. I don't know. Maybe there's something we can do, but that's just my comment. And the last thing that, probably not the last thing, but the other, another thing that I had, I met with representatives from the town that are discussing, discussing, I guess I would say, collective bargaining with the town of Elton. I met with them prior to going onto our MML meetings. And I, and out of that conversation, they had a representative here from the union and I don't have his name here in front of me. But he, he's representing some members of the town of Elton, some of our employees that are looking at possibly unionizing here in the town. I brought this up at the last meeting and I continue to say, I have no skin in the game and if everyone feels that this is the best road for them to go down, I'm very happy if this is the way they wanna go. So, I received an email from the representative to take a look at our charter. And there's some language in our charter that could be changed to allow unionization of all of our non-sworn officers and make it where anyone that's either a sworn officer or a non-sworn officer can unionize. Quite frankly, I have no problem with it. There's some language in there, I didn't review it all that well. Did I send it to you, John? But I think, I think what they're asking for, and it's probably not fair to them to only ask the two of you guys when we don't have a full board here, to see what the feel is. You know, going back years ago, and I think, what year was it, did the police officers, 2007, 2006?
Right around that time.
2006, 2007, the Elton Police Department, they went and they obtained, I think, 5,000 signatures? And they obtained the signatures, they went door to door, they had to have 5,000 town of Elton residents to put this onto a referendum to vote on. And they were successful. And they were successful. They were successful getting the 5,000 signatures. They were successful for the residents of the town of Elton to vote in favor of that. My gut feeling is, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but I don't believe that, I don't believe the members of our town, other than the non-sworn, or the sworn officers, would be able to collect 5,000 signatures from town residents. And I'm not sure how the vote would go. So that's why I'm saying I'm okay with changing the language, if we can change the language, and let them move forward with that opportunity. And once again, I think if we move forward with that direction, and I'm not asking you guys for any of that right now, I would ask the whole board. But if we do that, I think that we need to meet again with the representatives and have them understand fully what they're getting involved in as well as, you know, kind of what our position will be moving forward. I like it. I like it from the standpoint when we negotiate with the police department, it's a five-year contract, and it's done. You know, we don't hear anything for another five years. One thing that we as the mayor and commissioners have all the time is that every year at budget time, if it's not one employee, it's 50 employees come to us and say, Mayor, are we going to get more money this year? We're getting a raise. And it's always about money. And I would say I'd be more than happy if I sat here accurate this term to be able to say to, hey, we're going to negotiate this for the next three years, four years, or five years, and you don't have to hear it here again. I think it's actually not a bad play. I think it's a good play. I think you can budget better that way. But I would also say things like, use an example of Monday, I think we got an extra day off on Monday. I would say that things like that probably won't happen with the board in the future. And so there's a lot of good things that can happen, but when you're negotiating and you got those contracts, it'll probably be by the contract. So I'm okay with it. We're going to, next Wednesday when we got a full board, I'll bring it up to the other two board members, give it some thought. But John, take a look at it, make sure there's nothing there. I think the main thing is, is we have to have the same protection that you can't strike. I think that that's the most important part. And if we can negotiate better wages for everyone, fine, happy. Any question from anybody?
So next Wednesday, when you bring that up, are you going to allow representatives from them to speak to us?
I think we should.
Or you want to answer?
Yeah, I think we should.
That's not a problem.
Yeah. I think that's more than fair.
It is.
Because we've got a lot of questions, right? So.
And then you need to fully understand that there's going to be reactions to actions if you talk to them.
Yeah, so I know there's some members in the audience, and really, quite frankly, I don't know who's involved or not. There could be folks in staff that's really interested in moving forward with this. And, but I would say that the comment would be is next Wednesday, we'll have some questions and answers. So if you have a representative here, they could speak on the group's behalf, that would be great. And maybe reach out to Michelle and let her know who that person would be. Thank you. Rob, you have anything to say?
No, I thought that the fireworks went well, and I thought that the MML convention went well. We made a few potentially very good contacts down there, and I'm looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you. Charles? How much did you win?
I wouldn't wear it.
I agree with the fireworks. It was very timely. They organized at 9:10.
Yes.
Fireworks started five minutes later, and they ended 30 minutes later. So they did a good job at that. Just have a couple of questions for Louis. Any update on the armory, Louis? What are we doing with it?
Gene Minter has applied for a grant for how it was delivered. I think he may have, I don't see your.
Okay. How's that grant, has it been submitted?
It was submitted, yes.
Okay. Second question, Louis, building beside us, what's happening with it? I know it's for the police in the future for the town of Elton for record. So what has happened with it?
218?
Yes.
They submitted a cost estimate to me, but we did not budget for that amount of money. Consequently, I suggested that a portion of the armory be allocated for the records retention by the police department. And I have met with Carolyn, and subsequently I gave key to the room where we'll do that or they approve that. And it's a good place to put the record solid and not acceptable by the public. So I think they're going to go over there, tentatively anyway.
And last question, Louis, we had intentions at one time of doing something with South Street, but I guess that's put on hold for a number of reasons.
Oh, the cost of that is astronomical based on.
Yes. No problem. And Louis, I don't know if you was aware, 155 High Street, get one of the apartments, who owned those apartments, Michelle?
Gene Herman's daughter.
Gene Herman's daughter.
I don't know if that's her name. It's Gene Herman's daughter and first name's Candace.
Katie Herman.
Yeah, there you go.
Anyway, a couple of weeks ago, the trice was just astronomical to the point that there's children playing around inside there. Foxes, raccoon, anything you could name was entered the trice. It was that bad. Town of Elton went over there, emptied it, but it's full again. But you were there, Louis?
I wasn't over there.
No, but I'm just making you aware of the fact. And Chip made it possible for BPW to go down and empty it, but it's loaded again, so I don't know where we go from here. And that cannot be an ongoing thing, for the safety of the kids and for the residents.
And I did find out, Chip said that the loan was finally paid, it was with Waste Management, it was stretched out. And the door finally got paid and it got emptied today. So he's going to keep an eye on it as well.
Okay. That's it.
Good news. I know there's going to be a lot of trash today, though.
It is.
A lot of trash in town today. I'm sure that we'll get calls today, there's no question about it. Okay, this is time we open up the floor for anyone that has anything to say for the good of the town. Yes, ma'am, please stand up, state your name, your address.
Alicia Calhoun. This is address 101 East Main Street. Last meeting, Commissioner Gibbons asked about my feelings regarding the Howard House and the fence around it, given up from the events in the town of Elton. I'm just following up to see if we have any updates. The fire marshal said that he has done his onsite investigation. He is not the one that had the fence put up. I don't know if he debated that or accounted that, but I'm just curious if we have any insight into the safety of that building and whether that fence can come down in the near future.
I will tell you, we will take a look at it. My gut feeling is it's going to probably have to stay up until, for a little while longer, but I'm not sure. We'll find out.
What do you think needs to happen before that fence can be removed?
I hear it's an ongoing, I think, I don't think that they've given, given the final word yet on calls.
I'm sure they're worried about debris still falling from the roof.
Well, I haven't seen it, but I think that the potential is there. The rafters and such are burnt. And from what I hear, there was an additional cave-in, you know, a small one. But even a small one is something to worry about. So I think that's why the fences are still up. I don't know that anybody can go up there and like clear it. Lou, at what time could we require the property owners to put plywood on their windows? Would that help? I don't even know if that would help.
I think you'd have to have a risk assessment or a structural analysis done of that building prior to any removal of a fence because the liability would be.
It's too great. There's glass that's falling.
Yeah, you're going to have to have some serious work done on that.
Has anyone been looking at the structure of the building? The integrity of it?
I don't know. It's a private property, so I don't know if they've initiated anything or not.
And also, if I could add, it's going to be in the hands of insurance companies too. They're going to, the insurer is going to say what can happen.
I'll reach out to them. I'll reach out to them. I'll reach out to them, and I'll see if they can give me any insight. But the last I spoke to him a couple of weeks ago, it was going to be a long process because I think that they were just trying to determine where it started and whose insurance was going to cover what. That's where we're at.
Email is A N D Y dot.
Anyone on the Zoom meeting have anything to say? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.